All right, all right, all right. How's everyone doing tonight? Good. I heard a whisper good. That'll do. All right, so welcome everybody to the Wednesday, June 26th, 2024 City of Edina Planning Commission Meeting. On behalf of the rest of the planning commission, we are excited you are here tonight, for all you in person and anyone tuning in remotely. That kind of engagement, the curiosity, your feedback, all of that's vital to this process as we navigate change together here in Edina specifically in regards to how we use our land. I'll give you a quick rundown of the agendas, you know what to expect, and when we get to certain items of the agenda, I'll provide a little more context. First, we'll start with a call to order, then roll call, and we'll hit approval of the meeting agenda and the prior meeting's minutes. Then we have the community comment period, which is your chance as a citizen to speak about a matter not onto tonight's agenda. And you'll have the opportunity to do so at one of the podium here. Then we do not have any public hearings tonight. Instead, we just have one sketch plan review in our reports and recommendations section. And we wrap up every meeting with chair and member comments and staff comments before adjournment. Before we start, just want to reiterate that we are committed, and the city is committed, to your feedback, getting it in a variety of ways. The top one is our engagement website, bettertogetheredina.org. This didn't really exist a few years ago, and this is the, that net that captures a lot of what's going on in the city. And that's the interface for any curious resident about a project. A lot of potential projects and ongoing ones are on there, including the sketch plan for tonight. So residents have an idea of what we're about to talk to, talk about. And if we get any feedback through emails, it gets our, it gets its way to us, and we will, we consider it before we make any recommendations. Again, we have nothing binding tonight without a public hearing, so tonight is just the sketch plan. So without, without further ado, we will move right into the meeting. So call the meeting to order. And then roll call, please.
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. If there are no proposed changes, I'd welcome a motion.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes from June 12th of 2024. Same thing, if there's no proposed changes, I'd welcome a motion.
Approve?
Aye, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, next we have, like I mentioned, the community comment period of tonight's agenda, and that is your opportunity for anyone who is here in person that would like to speak about a matter not onto tonight's agenda. So anything you want to talk about besides 6016 Vernon Avenue, come right ahead. You have three minutes. State your full name, address. The light will start green and red when your time's up. But now is the time, if you have anything you'd like to say, you can come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. If anyone has something next time, come on ahead. All right, so again, we don't have any public hearings, but we have a sketch plan review. So just to give you some context of why we do this, before the sketch plan review process, it used to just jump right into a public hearing. So when a potential applicant proposes something, the 60-day clock starts and staff puts together a staff report, they provide a presentation, and that comes before us to make a recommendation. We took feedback from citizens as well as the planning commission. This is probably over a decade ago, right, Carrie? 15 years ago? And we implemented a sketch plan review, and that, that allows us to give non-binding feedback to the potential proposal and to the applicant team to then incorporate into a hopefully better and more optimized formal application, which would then come forward as a public hearing. And that would be your chance as a community member to come and speak for that. But for tonight, a sketch plan review is simply a back and forth between us and the city and us and the applicant. Carrie, you want to fill anything in there, or are you good?
I'm good. You covered it beautifully.
All right. So Carrie Teague, the Community Development Director, will now provide a presentation about this. Thank you, Carrie.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, this is a site that the vast majority of you are extremely familiar with, as we've had a couple of proposals on the site, 6016 Vernon Avenue. It's the Keys Auto Body site. Just to quickly go through some of those previous requests, originally, the first request was for a restaurant to expand the building, basically double the size of the building, two-story restaurant. They wanted some rooftop dining, required a comprehensive plan change and a rezoning. That project was denied. Then the Green Drop Donation, Donation Center proposed to just remodel the site. That also was denied. So the, the request before you this evening is for station pizza. It would be a takeout and delivery only, so no onsite seating. Here's a look at the site today. It was, came to my attention that the original pictures that were in the packet showed some arbovitae within the planter box here. Those were removed, so I updated that, and we'll get those in the packet for the city council, but those trees were removed. So this is what the site looks like today. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for medium-density residential, similar to the land uses to the west. It's currently zoned PCD4 Planned Commercial District. So the only uses allowed within a PCD4 district includes a car wash, auto repair, and a gas So as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing just to remodel the existing building. They would resurface the parking lot. Currently, it's, the pavement is in kind of a poor state of repair. They would construct a six-foot fence along the west and north lot line, in addition to providing some landscaping and screening for the single-family homes to the north and the higher density to the west. Again, here's those, it's labeled as existing trees, but they have been removed. So what would be required as part of a formal request would be a rezoning from PCD4 to Plan Commercial District 1. So that is a zoning district that's found in some of our smaller commercial nodes, 70th and France, 44th and France, just a couple of examples, Valley View and Wooddale, another. And also a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the site from medium-density residential to some type of neighborhood commercial. You may require, recall with that, with the original restaurant request, we looked at re-guiding the site to neighborhood node, but it's tough to define this as a node being just a single 16,000-square-foot lot. So potentially, it's a new designation, neighborhood commercial, and I'll touch on that a little bit as we move along. So this is our pyramid of discretion that we look at. Anytime we're amending the comprehensive plan, the city has complete discretion to say yes or no. So keep that in mind as we move through. So with the comprehensive plan amendment, with the donation center, we looked at adding a new category, a neighborhood service-type category. Anyway, that project failed. But perhaps what we could look at is a neighborhood commercial designation. So it would be a new land use designation within the comprehensive plan that would talk about small-scale retail and commercial uses, building footprints generally less than 2,000 square feet. This, this building is about 1,100, 1,200 square feet. To give you an idea of the size of that restaurant that was proposed, that was about 2,400 square feet with those additions that were, were proposed. In terms of our compliance table, the existing structure out there is not code compliant, doesn't comply with the setback to Vernon or Eden Prairie Road to the north, but it's all existing conditions, so no variances would be needed. They'd simply be using the existing site. So areas of focus for our discussion would be, is this an appropriate land use for the site? Should the comprehensive plan be amended for commercial use? And is the PCD1 zoning district appropriate? I sent out in an email and included in your packet all of the uses that are listed in the planned commercial district one to give you an idea of some of the uses that could be in the future allowed on the site if the zoning is changed. Keep in mind that any of those uses, if they wanted to expand for a larger building, they'd need variances. So it's one of those where future determination, if the land use were to change and expand to something larger, the city would have the ability to say no based on the setbacks. So you would have some discretion in a future expansion or a future use. So with that, I can stand for any questions, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions from fellow commissioners? Carrie? Oh, please, come on, someone. Yeah, Commissioner Alkire.
Thanks, Director Teague. A couple of questions. I don't know if this is a fair question or not, but from your experience, I didn't see like a buildable area chart. In your experience, it seems like most uses of this particular lot would require some variances, just because it's small and odd-shaped. Is that, is that fair? Does that fit your experience?
That's fair. I think any building that's put on this site would require variances.
Okay. And then are you aware of any other places in our city where there is one parcel, and a small one at that, that's neighborhood commercial, and everything within a considerable distance is either R1 or multifamily?
Yeah, I, I can't think of one.
Okay.
Yeah. And the reason being, this is there, you know, this used to be Highway 161, so it was a gas station along Vernon that used to be more of a major thoroughfare. So it's always had this automobile-type zoning district, but I'm not a, I can't think of any off the top of my head where it's isolated like this.
So is there any real distinction between what we were saying before neighborhood node and what we're saying now, neighborhood commercial? It's, it's kind of same thing, isn't it? It's just different words, but it's the same idea.
More or less, yeah. It's, it's honing in on specifically what can go there. Neighborhood node, the description is a little more broad, where this could be narrowed down to where we talk about small building size and small-scale retail or commercial uses.
Yeah. It's still in effect, a neighborhood node, that's one. Neighborhood commercial node, that's one parcel large. Last thing, is there any guidance in, in, in our, in our planning system or standards about what's, what is, when we should think it's a good idea to change the comprehensive plan and when we shouldn't?
Yeah, it's really at the discretion of planning commission with your recommendation, and ultimately, the city council to decide.
Okay, so it's up to us. All right, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Director Teague. Just to, just to continue just that thinking here a little bit, I know with the neighborhood service, I think is what we were looking at prior for the Green Drop idea, is there a real difference between neighborhood service and neighborhood commercial?
Just in that, I believe the description that we were looking at the last time was more a service-oriented, oriented type businesses, where this would allow the retail and commercial uses allowed in the PCD1 district. So it's a little more broad.
Gotcha. So the, the, you know, whether it's neighborhood, commercial, neighborhood service, it's just really coming up with a description specific for this location, right?
It is. It could be used elsewhere, you know, as we get into our next comprehensive plan update here in a couple of years. You know, maybe this is one that we look at elsewhere.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, that's going to be my, my next question. If there's any other opportunities like this, small area plots like this that maybe not as big for a node, but could fit a commercial or a service-type orientation, if we could use that same language and then apply to other parts of the city where we have lots that are this size?
We could.
All right, thank you.
Under the PCD1, are there guidelines for hours of operation of a business?
There are not. They are proposing specific hours, you know, perhaps it could be with a formal application, it's something that we can add as a condition for the site plan review that could be tied to the site and some type of a land use covenant that would go along with that.
Okay. I was just going to add, depending on the use, like if this were an auto body shop, there are certain hours, there are limitations in the hours. And that's like 6:00 AM till 10:00 PM, or you can't have anything from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM if it's an auto body shop. They have some things in there that piggyback.
For the existing zoning.
Yeah, like PCD1.
And then another question is, are there any parking guidelines for?
Yeah, so.
A delivery and takeout?
When I ran the calculations, I did it based on a restaurant, thinking that it, you know, that's the most similar use. And as I recall, based on the square footage of the building, 12 spaces would be required, and they would have 21 stalls with the repaving. So it would be code compliant for a restaurant of this size. I don't believe they would likely use all of those stalls, so that might be something that we look at as part of the site plan. Can they reduce some of the parking, create more green space? That's a possibility.
And that's something that we could make as a condition of the?
Of a formal application.
A formal application, okay. And then the only other question I was wondering about is, you know, rezoning one specific parcel, and maybe that's a question for the rest of us at the end of this, in our discussions. But maybe, before I do that, ask, ask your thoughts about rezoning one specific parcel.
Yeah, with most of our rezoning requests, it is just for one parcel. This being unique in that it's already zoned commercial, very isolated from any other type of use, but this would just be a rezoning to a, what would seem to me as a less intense zoning district than the PCD4, where you could have a car wash, you know, auto repair.
Thank you.
Just looking at that lot, I mean, you know a lot about it, and you've been dealing with these applications for a while now. Is there something kind of pragmatic about its, or is, are there practical limitations associated with just inherent conditions of it that are going to make building multifamily, whatever it's guided for right now in the comprehensive plan, unlikely or impossible? I mean, you know, we see a lot of proposals for really small lot, multifamily sometimes, and it's just so difficult, difficult to even consider those. How realistic is it that someone could even build a multifamily project on this?
Yeah, that's a great question. Because it is, it's, it's got the limitation of requiring a street setback along the north lot line, so they need a 35-foot setback back here, as well as a street setback on Vernon. So there's, you can't put a structure really anywhere on this site that doesn't require a variance. We looked at, so if this were, it's guided for medium-density residential, if this were rezoned for that type of a use, variances would be required. This is somewhat similar, and I think I made this comparison the last time, to the four-unit, the two duplexes being built at Valley View and Wooddale. That lot over there is about 11,000 square feet. This is 16,000 square feet, so this is actually a little bit larger, but it would still require variances to get, four units would be the maximum density under the medium-density designation in the comprehensive plan.
Is, is it possible at all to have access or do anything from Eden Prairie Road, you know, kind of the back of it? Or is that kind of out of the question in terms of access and?
Yeah, it's, there is access available off Eden Prairie Road. However, for a commercial use like this, Vernon is the most appropriate. We wouldn't want all the commercial traffic to go through the residential district, so...
But even if somebody wanted to, they'd, I mean, there's no, they'd have to walk through the bushes or something, right? I mean, if they were parking on Eden Prairie Road, it's really no practical access.
Correct. Yeah, and especially.
And that's not possible. I mean, that's not something that could change or something that's part of the plan. It could be.
Yeah, it's tough to say what, what may or may not happen in the future. Someone may request that, but it could be a condition with a formal application if we don't want to allow any access along here, you know. With the fence, we could condition no openings. A person could still walk around this way. It would seem to me we would want to allow pedestrians through there, but maybe not necessarily a vehicular access.
Thanks.
So we're working with consultants now to kind of redefine our zoning code or whatever, so is this whole PCD1 thing is going to be going away, or?
I don't believe, well, it's, it's tough to determine. We're doing the audit and what the next phase looks like. It's hard to determine. But I would envision, most cities don't have a long list of 100, 150 different retail users. I could see that being condensed to a more simpler, a simple term, retail, commercial, whatever that may be. So I could see something like that happening, but changing all of our zoning districts, tough to say at this point.
Yeah, I don't see any philatelic shops or laundrette's in the neighborhood, so thanks.
I got a couple of questions for you. So speaking of the area north, I mean, it's basically like a 60-foot-wide, you know, right away. Can you explain the history of that vacated street or what that is intended to ever do long-term, city-wise, besides hold a very narrow sidewalk?
Yeah, I, I apologize, I don't know the history of...
Yeah, you can see good on that map.
Yep. Where a road connection could be made, it's a, would be an extremely awkward intersection to have basically four legs, five legs.
I guess a question.
It might have been a traffic safety issue.
And I guess the question then is like, you know, there's times where, I mean, even Valley View, Wooddale, you know, the city had a little chunk of like really unusable property, but then it made sense to kind of bargain and let the potential re-developer maybe get a piece of that to make their thing pencil and puzzle better. It seems like we have a bunch of extra space there that isn't being optimally used in any way, except maybe just an open buffer to the neighbors, but it's certainly not used well, right? I mean, it's a small little sidewalk in a 60-foot-wide trough. I, I, like, has that come up in any of the potential discussions or proposals with prior applicants?
Yeah, we really haven't talked about that.
And then, I guess then the second question, and you noted it in the report, but if you look at both sides of Vernon, like almost the entire stretch, that north section of this block is like the only one without a sidewalk, both on the north and south side. It's pretty mu, like, pretty much has people bypass with that sidewalk that takes you to Eden Prairie Road. So I know some of the condition or expectation would be on the developer, however, I've seen the county and city or whoever is building sidewalks farther down Vernon. So is there anything in the, you know, in the near future that is expecting to kind of finish that sidewalk connection on this final block? It's, it's like the only one missing for some reason.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of anything in the near future, but I seem to recall with those previous requests, we were looking at either getting easements or having that segment on, done on this, on this site, to kind of plan for the future when that does come.
Okay. Yeah, all right. That's all I got for now. Yeah. Commissioner Miranda.
Well, just a little history thing for your first question about Eden Prairie Road. My understanding is that before Vernon Avenue was a very straight road, so it was done in the age of modern equipment for building freeways or whatever. So before that, when Edina was just a farming village or whatever, Eden Avenue was part of Eden Prairie Road. And so they eventually straightened it, made it Vernon Avenue. And so everything that's Eden Prairie Road or Eden, whatever, was part of the, Eden Prairie Road was connected to Edina to Eden Prairie, so...
I just one more question to follow up on Commissioner Miranda's question about the zoning audit. So part of the project, as I understood it, was to simplify, I think he was referring to that. But I think another part of it was to help our zoning match the comprehensive plan more closely. So wouldn't that fit here, where we have a zoning classification which does not fit the comprehensive plan and has not, and has been repeatedly brought up over the past couple of years?
Yes, we definitely want to reconcile our discrepancy here. You know, if this project fails, you know, the, the property owner has been actively seeking some type of a use, but perhaps if three commercial-type operations fail, maybe we look at proactive, proactively rezoning to match the comprehensive plan. So that is a possibility for the future.
All right, thank you. Maybe more of a comment, but I think someone asked, maybe you asked a question just about like buildable footprint, but also PCD4 is limited to like a 0.3 floor area ratio, correct? Where PCD1 is limited to a 1.0 floor area ratio, so currently, how it's zoned, like you're also limited with what and how you could build on it for that. So just even that shift would provide more flexibility in the future.
It would, but they would still need variances for the setback, so the city has a little discretion there.
But it, but you'd have the potential where you wouldn't have a variance for the floor area ratio, right? area ratio, right?
Yes, yep. That's a good point.
Yeah.
I guess I was wondering, is it standard to add another zoning division for, during like a planning commission meeting compared to like a comprehensive plan adjustment for like adding that neighborhood commercial or whatever?
Yeah, we typically, when there's a comprehensive plan amendment, usually a rezoning goes with it. So we do them at the same time.
So they aren't typically occurring during planning commission meetings here, right?
Well, if I'm following the question, so this is sketch plan, just to give them informal, non-binding feedback on a potential. Should a formal application be made, they would request a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning. The comprehensive plan amendment requires a four-fifths vote of the, of the city council and three-fifths for the rezoning. But it is, it is something that the planning commission would take up in the future.
Thank you.
Was part of your question just the creation of potentially a new designation, or was it?
Yeah, yeah, during, during a planning commission meeting.
So is that part of it? I mean, just the neighborhood commercial?
Yep, it's, that would be the amendment to the comprehensive plan, this new land use category within.
Yeah, where it's not really well-defined in, in that at all, right?
Not currently, correct. Yeah, that's where, with the first request, we went with an existing category in the comprehensive plan. But that seemed to be not well-received because this really isn't a node. It's not multiple properties. So, I mean, we still, we could go and use that designation if we wanted to. I'm just throwing that idea out as a possibility.
Oh, thank you. Any other questions for Carrie? Thank you, Carrie. We'll probably have more questions later. Now is a time, though, we'd welcome the applicant team to come forward, just state your name, address, and then walk us through what you're proposing.
My name is Jesse Haymer. I'm with Momentum Design Group. I'm the architect on the project, or will be the architect of the project, if there is a project. And yeah, we, we're here essentially just to get feedback. We, we need to know kind of, is this seem, does this seem like a right use? We feel like it's a good fit for this particular property, given the difficulties of, of the, the shape and size and the location. We feel like it's a good, a good fit, obviously, but we need to hear that from you in order to know whether or not we can move forward. We've spoken with the, with the neighborhood. We had a neighborhood meeting last week. I'd love to give you a kind of a quick rundown of some of the highlights of what we sort of learned, or what we heard there. Obviously, eventually they'll have an opportunity to speak to you directly about any of this. But, you know, a couple of things that came up were, one of them was, was concern about separation with the neighborhood. You know, some of the comments I know that we've heard already were talking about opening the, you know, possibly allowing a pedestrian connection, for example. That was something the neighbors didn't want, at least the neighbors that spoke to us. They were very happy to see a fence that ran all the way across the top of, on the north side there, with all of the landscaping on the outside of the fence, because they're concerned with people parking in their neighborhood and then walking to the, walking to the restaurant. So, so that was definitely some feedback that we had. And that plays in a little bit to the parking as well. So the, the typical peak hours, the thought here is that we're probably looking at, let me just make sure I get my numbers right. Yeah, the, probably about five employees would be actually working in the, in the facility itself, and then three drivers, delivery drivers. So about eight of those parking stalls, give or take, would be taken up by the, by the employees. That leaves, that leaves about 12, 12 or so, if my math is right, it might be a little ball, the, of sort of people for, to stop and pick up. It's unlikely that we would actually have 12 there at any given time. That seems like a lot for one, you know, for what's effectively a 10-minute transaction at worst, we would think. But, but we did want to make, we want to show the, the neighborhood, we want to make it clear to them, we are not going to be having people filling up your streets, parking in front of your driveway to run over and pick up their pizza. So we just wanted to kind of clear that. The current, in terms of the parking, the current parking lot is actually larger than what we're showing right now. It continues all the way up to the property line. The fence is on the property line on that north and west side of the, of the building. But, but once we sort of pull it in to, you know, we're moving that, that fence back, essentially not, we'll build a new fence, but we'll be pulling that fence back, adding the additional landscaping. That sort of shrinks down to the, the parking lot a little bit. So it's not as much as it is today, but it's, it's still enough that we want to be a comfort, comfortable margin to avoid any spillover of traffic. Other things that were asked there, they want to know where the dumpster location was. There's an existing concrete pad on the west side of the building that we would likely be using, you know, and eventually we'll be designing that, be screened and follow all the rules that it needs to. The other question was, would we have bike parking? And so again, there's an existing pad, it's actually on the north side of the building, that we think will work very well for, except that one actually doesn't show up on the drawing, unfortunately. But, and in fact, we weren't sure we were going to keep it originally. We were thinking we might just tear that out, because we didn't think we had a real good use for it. But actually looking at it, it's not in bad, too bad a shape. We think we'd keep it and use it for the, for, put bike racks there. Obviously, concerns about future use. That was the biggest concern we heard. We had a lot of people who, you know, were interested in what we were doing. They liked what we were doing. They liked the proposal for a, for the business use that we were suggesting. But they're concerned about the future. They want to know that, you know, we aren't going to change the zoning and then our business fails, and then they can come in there and somebody can just build whatever they want. And so we certainly understand their concerns. We are looking for the adaptive reuse of an existing building for a delivery and carryout-only food service. That's what we are looking for, right? What that looks like in terms of your zoning, in terms of your rules, we want to work with the city to figure that out. We just want a path forward to kind of make that happen, that addresses their concerns, as well as allowing us to put in what we think is a good product. Something that's valuable and useful in that location, that works in that location, which is otherwise a very difficult location. We've had some discussion about that already tonight, about, you know, the setbacks required and the, the possibility of even building something there, that, that any developer could, could make sense out of. So we're here to just find out, do you guys think it's a, a use that makes sense? And is there a path forward for us to make that happen? Any questions? Certainly ask me. Jake, the owner is here as well, if you had questions about the operations of the restaurant, for example.
Hey, could you give us like a history of, do you have that Minnetonka location currently correct? Maybe just give us a rundown of, you know, what you do, what's your vision?
Yeah, so we've been in Minnetonka for eight years, approximately. I didn't start that restaurant, but I got involved a year after it was open. And we do, we've grown considerably. We're still growing really fast. We, we, even with the dine-in, we have a big patio and dine-in space, and we still do about 50% takeout, which is what I anticipate we would do at this new store. And I know what that looks like as far as parking and flow and whatnot. Where, he talked about a 10-minute transaction for a takeout. That would be a massive failure on our, on our park. So we are good at, at takeout and delivery. We're really fast. And flow-wise, we would, that parking there would be not an issue at all, which I know was the biggest concern. In fact, I actually looked at the space three, one, three years ago. Somebody told me it was coming available, and I said, you can't park it, you know. And I, and I forgot about it until the process drug on, and I came up with this concept, because we, it would be new for us. But I'm confident in the ability to be successful there, based on what we do now.
Thank you for that. I guess I'd open it to just fellow commissioners, ask you guys any questions, and, and then probably at the end we'll share feedback, but maybe questions first? Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
I could start. So just a little bit more about the operation. I know it's not too much parking where there's going to be a whole lot of parking there, but how would this model work? Is it like a food delivery service that you would contract with, and they would, like if I go onto UberEats, for example, or Grubhub, or one of these sites, then you would contract with a food service company, they would come here, just pick it up, deliver it? Or are they fully employed by, by your company to do this?
Yeah, so we currently do both, and that's what I would anticipate doing there. We have our own drivers. As far as the split of it, I would say it's pretty equal to what we deliver and what other services deliver. And it, it really, from a flow standpoint, it really doesn't matter. I mean, it's whether someone picks it up, or the Uber driver, or the DoorDash driver picks it up, it's still a car coming in, walks in, and we hand them their food. So I, you know, without, that's, that's, that, that's the plan to do, to use. We use DoorDash and UberEats and our drivers, which is what we would, unless something changes, or somebody new comes into the market or whatnot, but that's what we envision. And they would, and, sorry, I would say with, with regard to that, you know, once we get down to brass tacks on the parking, we'd probably, we might even consider having like a third-party designated spot or something where they, they could park, if that made it easier. I don't really see any advantage to that, but there's things that we can do there.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. I'm sure you've done maybe some market research or stuff like that. Like, what kind of volume, if you could even share with us, like, is this a spot that, once you utilize it, you're kind of capped at a certain service level? Or is there an opportunity that you could even expand it, you know, maybe create a larger kitchen, because the volume just increased? Everyone wants to pick up your pizzas on Fridays? What does the flow like during the week? Is it really slow Monday through Wednesday, and then movie night, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the volume is really high? Like, what's kind of that, that sense of volume and flow throughout the week?
Yeah. So we're definitely busiest in the summer, but we have a patio, so that would probably change at this site. Although, you know, it's, we're busy, we're pretty busy all the time. We're extra busy on Saturday, or Fridays and Saturdays. Sunday nights, we get pretty busy. And, you know, for example, Sunday nights, we do a lot of takeout and delivery. Friday nights, everything is busy. During the week, you know, dinner hours are, we do most of our business currently at night. And I don't know what, you know, I think in, in this new location, we'd probably push more for, you know, lunch-type catering to offices and whatnot. That obviously got disrupted with COVID. We were on our way to building that, and then nobody went to the office anymore. But that's coming back. So, but so definitely, you know, it almost, it's, Monday is our slowest day. Friday, Saturday are busiest days, and it's basically a, you know, an incline from between the two of them as far as flow. As far as volume, are you wondering like what we're performing as far as sales, or are you just saying as far as general flow?
Yeah, just the, just the general flow. I think you, you explained it pretty well, where maybe in like the morning times, not so much. Evening time, it spikes up, and then as you go into the weekend, it's probably where you see more of the traffic, and it kind of slows on maybe like Monday. Just to give residents a sense of like what to expect throughout the week.
Yeah, and, and what I will say there is, generally what we do at our restaurant is we spend all day prepping. We do a lunch service, but it's a small fraction of our, of our total sales. So there would be, you know, prep, we'd be prepping over there, really until dinner every day, with some food going out the door. That's what I anticipate.
Thank you.
First question is an easy one. What is your name?
My name is Jake Schaefer. I live in Adina, right over by Birchcrest Park.
Thank you. I thought that there was something in the materials that were presented that had a sidewalk, but we're not seeing a sidewalk on here.
Yeah, I think that was in Director Teague's comments. It wasn't in, in our original proposal. We have no necessary, we have no reason to not want a sidewalk. Sidewalk's fine with us. We did have a number of neighbors who came up who said that they'd be, they'd be walking to this place all the time to pick up a pizza. So I think that's certainly not something we would object to.
You wouldn't?
We would not.
Object to. Okay. And then to pick up, I was going to ask anyway, the questions that Commissioner Smith started, I was going to ask specifically, what percentage of your daily sales are in, between, say, four and six, in your other, other store?
I don't have that. I mean, I would, let me just do some quick math in my head here. Probably between four and six. I would say between four and seven, probably 70%. It's hard to pin down four and six, or five and, it's five and seven is really our busiest time currently, but that can change, you know, for a lot of reasons at a new location. But we do most of our business, not most, probably half of our business between like, in the, we probably do 70% of our business in the two and a half hours of the busiest time of the day. That moves around. Some days it starts at 4:30, sometimes it starts at seven. So it just, it's, there's no real exact science to that.
Okay. My, my guess was 80%, but I'm, I'm happy to go with 70. And about, how, how big is your location and exactly where is it, your other location?
It's on Minnetonka Boulevard, between Highway 100, or Highway 169 and 494. There's a People's Organic and a Dairy Queen over there, by Big Willow Park. And our store, I think right now, it's an old gas station. I don't even know. I would say 1,700 square feet, maybe, with the pat, and then we have a patio.
So do you have an estimation based upon the size, what this facility is, of how many pizzas you'd sell on a busy day, on a, on a Friday, say?
On a Friday night? I mean, I would say that, I, I don't know, I don't know that there's a correlation between the size of our store in this case and sales, just because we're all going to be leaving the building.
But you have capacities for?
Yeah, and, and.
Cooking capacities, and only so many pizza ovens?
We do, and, and we would build this for, you know, to plan on growth. This kitchen would be five times the size of our current kitchen, actually. We do a lot out of a very little space over there. But a busy Friday night, or a busy Friday, because Fridays are a busier lunch, you know, 300 pizzas type thing. And that's, of course, we have dine-in, and that wouldn't probably happen with just takeout.
Yeah, I'm just doing some back-of-the-napkin calculations. I'm the accountant on, on the commission. Okay, thank.
Going down the line, Lou?
So this, to me, really feels more like an industrial operation. I feel like this sort of business would be great in Adina in someplace like, you know, some side street in, you know, the greater Cahill District, or somewhere around South Dale or something, where, you know, there's large car capacity, which might be unused, and, and there's a lot going on there and such. You know, I don't think, I mean, your plans physically fit the land. I mean, there's no argument about that. But the, the question to me is, does it fit what, you know, we as a city want in this area? And so there's single-family homes, north and south. There's high-density housing along the corridor, which could be good for your business. But it's all car-driven. I mean, you know, everything here is about getting cars in and out of here. And I just think it's going to add, in certain parts of the day, add a lot of traffic, add a lot of friction for, you know, this is one of the few streets in Adina that has bike lanes along the length of it. And now you're going to have, be having delivery drivers who are in a rush, you know, trying to get in and out of there, and customers coming in and out, and they're not even staying. They're just coming in to get a pizza, or what, with their order, and leave. And so, again, this would be a great business for Adina. I just don't think this is the right place for it. So I think this is like the worst possible location for it. So it's gonna, I mean, it's basically a, a small industrial facility, you know, surrounded by housing. by housing and, and nothing else. And any plans the city might have for making this street a future, you know, transit corridor, which the city needs in east-west corridor, this is an area we're discussing in our future areas of change for the city. It, it just, it's counter to everything I think the city is really trying to do here. So in my estimation, this is just a complete, a complete no-go for me. I would love to see it somewhere else in Edina, like the two other places I mentioned would be an ideal fit. We'd love to have your business here and whatever, but this particular location, I just, it's just a complete no-go for me. Thank you.
Just a question, follow-up to your comment there. Is it how the restaurant operationally is making it such or is it, is it the use in general?
Well, right, so, so there was a restaurant proposal before.
Yeah.
And actually I was against that one too, although I think it was better, again, not the food, not anything you're doing, because it was sit-down. So it was better, I think, because there would be less turnover, right? So the less turnover is, the fewer cars are going in and out, the less conflict there is, people making left-hand turns, all that sort of stuff. Sorry, I used to be on the Transportation Commission. So, you know, and we're trying to reduce VMT. We have a climate action plan, right? We're trying to reduce VMT. This is the complete opposite of that. And there's not a lot of, there's high-density housing right along the street but nowhere else. And so the driver's going to be driving, you know, a significant distance to their destination. So you're going to need a bunch of them. So it's, and by having, so the previous owner, the previous proposal for a restaurant was going to have, it was dine-in space there, so, but this entire thing uses a kitchen, which is why I'm saying it's industrial, right? So, so this is like, you know, food manufacturing, basically, right? So, so they're producing a ton of food because they're just making food. They're not serving people, they're not, you know, they're just putting it in boxes and having it shipped basically out of there or whatever. So whether it's a delivery driver or somebody picking it up. And there'll be a few people, I mean, if it ever did get approved, I would definitely want a hole in that fence because we would like to have people from the neighborhood, you know, even if they say they're not going to do it, people are going to want to eat here or whatever. But it's pretty low density, so you're not going to have hundreds of people a night doing that or anything. So it's, it's all the land uses around it, you know, I mean, you can't do anything in isolation, right? It's all the land uses around it combined with what this one, our lone east-west route in Edina that could really support transit. There's no other east-west street that can really do it the way Vernon can. And it would connect Grandview, which has the 46 bus with, you know, the Green Line Extension and connect our other Lincoln and Lundian area, which we're also talking about. This is an amazing location, right? But, and it's awkward for everybody involved, for the neighbors, for the business owner and for the city because of its shape and size and whatever and its previous grandfathering. I mean, there's so much that's really hard about this, right? But an industrial food facility where you're just cranking out tons of food for delivery and pickup, where you're going to have tons of cars, just is not, I don't think the neighbors got, I think they're really, I don't think they realize how, how busy it's going to be. Maybe not right away, but eventually if it becomes successful, it, it's like a little factory and, you know, and that's good, you know, somewhere else, you know. Edina has places for that. We have two industrial districts in the city and that would be a perfect location for it, but I, I just feel this is, it would, it, it makes, every time we do something like this, like when we, when I first joined the commission and the bank, no, was it the bank? The bank or the building next to it? No, it was the bank, was being built on France Avenue. And, you know, it's like, oh, we wanted to set, we wanted the parking lot in front even though we said that wasn't our plan or whatever. It was like, oh, but the building next door did that and it was, they had a very special use case. Well, now it becomes precedent, you know? I don't want to set precedent here, right? Or if we do set precedent, it's for the right thing, for the kinds of thing the city wants in the future. So I just think this use is wrong. I think this, this intensity of use is, certainly is wrong for this location. Thank you.
Thanks for expanding about, upon that.
Can I just touch on one thing? One, you know, I would, I think an argument could be made that that location, because it is where it is versus in an industrial area, I mean, we do, I would say a, a, a big majority of our customers that pick up do it because they're essentially driving by and they know they're going to drive by there and they don't have to go home and come back because they're, you know, we're in a residential area currently. And in this location is, I think we would, you know, and to your point, it wouldn't be hundreds of people, but to get food in that, in that corridor over there, somebody's getting in their car and going somewhere or having it delivered already because there's nothing over there. And we would be an option that is right there.
Sure, but this just continues, you know, the car hegemony. And so what we're trying to do as a city is break away from that and design things in the future so that you don't need a car to get everywhere and you don't, you know, have to use a car to get everything. And so, you know, drive-ins, drive-throughs, all that sort of thing, it doesn't meet our climate action plan at all and I don't know why the city has not acted on that yet, but we, we just need to get rid of this kind of use and especially near a neighborhood like this.
Let's just go around the line.
Okay.
Thanks for coming to speak with us tonight. A couple of questions. Could you say a few words about why you have more parking spaces than the minimum? And kind of related question to that is, how important is controlling redevelopment cost to your business model? I mean, I'm generally in favor of adaptive reuse, but it seems like we would prefer a little more greenery and a little less blacktop if, if it's not going to be actively used. So can you just say a little bit more about that?
Yeah. Well, we don't want to be underparked, for starters. And I, you know, even, and I don't know if this is the right thing to say or not, but those, whatever it is, three spots to the south of the building there, that's where our employees would probably tandem park just because we'd be there for the day. So it actually really frees up parking. Certainly not opposed to putting in green spaces wherever it's suitable, but I, you know, nobody, it doesn't, the reason that I passed on this from the beginning, or in the beginning was because of parking. I didn't want to be in a situation where we were pushing people into the neighborhood or they were just, you know, making laps because there was nowhere to park.
Okay, so for your, for your business model, you, you don't think you're overparked?
Overparked?
Overparked. You think you have the right amount?
I, I would rather be overparked than underparked, I guess. So I don't, I can't, I don't think we're, I don't think we're overparked. I mean, I don't think we're underparked. I don't, and I, I wouldn't be doing it if I thought we were underparked.
Okay.
So it's somewhere in there. I think we're good with that parking.
Okay, just, this is more a matter of curiosity than anything else. Do you have your own delivery vehicles or do your drivers supply them?
Drivers.
Do you, I don't know, do you have maintenance standards for those?
We do like a monthly, for insurance purposes, a monthly checklist and whatnot, but I, I don't know about, if I have to say maintenance standards. I'm not sure.
So if you had a, if you had a driver with a busted muffler, would he, would he drive? Is what I'm trying to get at.
I don't, we, we've never run into a problem like that.
Okay.
That would be something to, you know, we can, we have control over that.
Okay.
If they show up with a monster truck that is unmuffled, you know, that's a problem.
All right, thank you.
You may have talked about this, but I'm going to ask you to do it again. Your other space has eat-in, pickup and takeout. This is going to be delivery or pickup. What do you think is going to be the split between pickup and delivery?
Uh, heavy pickup probably. I mean, if it's consistent with what we are. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's, we definitely do considerably more pickup than delivery.
People heading on the way home or?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm going to push back on Lou just a little bit because I rode my bike here tonight. If it's nice out, you know, and it's sunny late, I'm going to ride my bike. And I pick locations in the neighborhood to go out to eat based on the fact that I can ride my bike there, throw it on the back and go home and, you know, if it's nice. And I'm kind of thinking some people in the neighborhood would like to be able to walk here. And, and we can talk more about it later, but my, my question is about the parking too. There's a couple of parking areas on, spaces on here that seem, that I would feel uncomfortable pulling my car into because I would be pulling out and like the first one, all the way to the right, I'd be pulling back into traffic. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to kind of watch what's coming from Vernon, from that first space. And the other thing, this is, I like the fact that, we'll get into this later, but at 1,270 square feet, we're kind of at the FAR for PCD1 and they can't necessarily build Where to 10th?
Yeah.
16?
About 10%.
Oh, okay. And that could be part of the condition? You'd be willing to have that be part of the condition?
Absolutely.
To keep the existing footprint? Okay, okay.
I can address the, the parking issue. There are a, a number of things about the, the sketch plan here that obviously are loose. And one of those is really going to be the interaction between the, those curb cuts. When we get a civil engineer involved, we work with the city engineers to kind of best sort of figure these things out. I mean, that's, that's all part of the design process that hasn't taken place at this point. So, I mean, I, I see your point and it will be something that needs to be addressed. And maybe we can't get 21, maybe it's got to be 20 and obviously Jake's got to ultimately decide what he can live with. But, but, but yeah, I mean, we sort of know that there's additional work that needs to be done here in terms of the design.
And I forgot to say this earlier, but I commend you. I mean, I think this plan, just one plan, existing building was really easy to read and is the way the sketch plan is supposed to be, that you're not supposed to spend a ton of work on it. So I appreciate those things.
I don't want to spend Jake's money if you guys all say we don't want this to go away.
Right.
We want to know that sooner rather than later.
And, and with that parking, now that I'm looking at it, I mean, generally we don't, we don't allow our park, our current employees to park in our lot. We've got parking around the building, but it might be that we end up having employees parked in the least desirable, furthest-away spots because they're not going to move. So that's another thing that once we had that plan, we would get that tidied up.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Just keep looking this way. Yeah, questions, more questions. So just a quick question here. Service area. So when you set up this business, how far would you serve customers? Is it, I know it's going to be all over Edina, most likely, but do you extend into Bloomington? Do you extend into Minneapolis? Like kind of what are your boundaries for service?
No, well, we would have our, for our drivers, we would have a, a limited delivery area. That's where, that's where the third parties come in. They might take a pizza to Bloomington, but, but, you know, that's no skin off our back. And I don't even, you know, without, without having drawn a circle around the property and seen, I mean, I know Edina very well, I've lived here a long time, but we may not even, we may not reach the furthest corners of Edina with our drivers. That might be a pickup slash third-party deal.
Last question, and I know this is kind of more on the expansion side, but I feel like I should ask it still. I'm sure you've heard about the concept of a ghost kitchen.
Of a ghost kitchen?
Yeah. So is this something that you guys would be looking at in the future? Let's just say I'm a Thai restaurant in Minneapolis and I want to set up a, or borrow a contract with another kitchen locally here in Nike Dino. You guys would not just do pizzas, but you might also deliver food and create a catering space for other types of companies?
I mean, if it goes like I hope it goes, we won't be doing any of that because we won't have time, I would say, as far as using the, we, we will be maximizing our kitchen and building it accordingly and not set up for other people to be using our space. I mean, that would, that sounds like a, an alternative if we were failing, to me maybe, but hopefully we don't ever get there.
You know, just to think about velocity a little bit here, you know, cars coming in, cars coming out. You kind of mentioned that the high point would be between five and seven, roughly 200 pizzas a day, you know? If it's like 80% in that time, that's 240 pizzas roughly or so. And you think you have enough parking space. I think the concern that we are trying to also think about is, you know, what's the amount of volume going through here every day and throughout the week? And so I know we'll get to the comment section, but just looking at, you know, Vernon Avenue, cars coming in, cars coming out, pedestrians, bikers going up and down that street, would that, would that create any opportunities for accidents, right? Like certain times of day? I'm just trying to match regular resident volume on that street versus your peak hours or when you would have volume coming through. I'm just trying to balance those. So I think that's the piece that, I know the parking study, you kind of mentioned a little bit here, might help address too, but that's what I'm thinking about as I, as I, as I look at this.
Yeah, let me, the 240 pizzas between five and seven, that, that's never happened. I think you're, we're, we got a little loose on our math there. 300 pizzas would be a really busy Friday dine-in. Every, that's, that's over there. I, I anticipate about 50% of that type of volume. So I think we're, I hope you're right if we hit over there, but I don't, I don't think so.
Yes, just a couple of follow-up questions and I appreciate your patience and your answers. How are you accommodating for deliveries, being that this is such a small space and everything? I mean, are you working with like Cisco and these 18-wheelers that are going to be coming into the lot? And are your deliveries all in the mornings or, I mean, I would imagine that nobody in the restaurant business wants to get their deliveries at lunchtime, you know? So basically, how does, how does that work and how do you accommodate these big trucks in this small space?
So, and then just to address sort of the frequency of that, number one, we would have a lot more storage here than we do at our current restaurant. And our product is, everything is fresh. We don't do frozen stuff in general. So it's three times a week currently and that's probably twice the volume of what this store would do. So it would be two or three times a week. They, they're actually very workable as far as we can, we can, within reason, dictate when we want to get our, our, have our delivery dropped. And they, you know, it's, it's generally quite consistent. And it is a, you know, we do use US Food right now. They run trucks around. But it would be twice, two or three times a week. And again, without knowing exactly what that parking lot looks like, I would think that there's enough room there for them to pull into our lot, you know, obviously not parking on Vernon. But currently they pull into our parking lot and unload right there.
And the flip side of that, the trash, how often does that get picked up?
We do that, let me think about that. We do trash twice a week and recycling once, but that would be dramatically lower without dine-in. The majority of our trash is, you know, what's happened, what's being created by customers eating in the restaurant. It's generally just boxes for, this would be boxes because it would be, you know, the food shows up in cases and we'd be doing that.
Okay, thanks very much.
Further questions?
Questions? No questions?
Okay. I got a couple of questions. First one, I mean, it, it's obvious just with the history of, of this site and the potential projects and neighbors, city complex and everything. We're just in conflict of competing interests, right? So what would you want to do here if you had the space, say, to do it? I mean, would you rat, like if you could and had the space, would you rather replicate what you have in Minnetoka where you have dining?
Yeah.
If you had the space?
That's a really good question and I don't know that I can truthfully answer it. it. Because the front, you know, having a full-service restaurant is great, but it's, it's also double the work essentially. You got your back of the house and the front of the house, they're, they're both intense. I would say ideally, if I could, you know, if we could have this be a successful standalone delivery and pickup site, I think I might prefer that. As cool as it is, you know, and there are synergies of having people dine in and not, but, you know, I think if anybody's craving that experience, they can, you know, drive 15 minutes to get to our restaurant if they want to go have a beer and, and a pizza. It's a good question and I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you, but I would say off the top of my head, if this, if this could be successful like this, which I do believe that it can be, or it wouldn't be here, I think this is super manageable.
So, yeah, let's say three years ago, when you kind of ruled this out because you didn't have this idea. I mean, if the site was twice as large, you probably would have been interested to more or less replicate at that time.
I would, for sure, and I would say more though parking. The parking was the biggest, the size of it, you know, like I said, we do what we do out of like 1,700 square feet, so it wouldn't have needed much expansion if any. I mean, it would have needed some because there's really not enough room, but the parking would have, was the, was the biggest thing. If you, if that had 50 parking stalls and, you know, was it a little bit bigger, then I would say yes.
What does your current facility have for parking? Is it close to that 50 mark?
It's 36 in our lot. And then we've got, we're on Minnetaka Boulevard, which you can park on. And then we're on the corner of, I don't even know the name of the street. This is like a dead-end street.
Bridge Street or something.
Yeah, so there's, there's probably, I mean, with, you would, I would consider, yeah, about 50, like around our building and in our lot, something like that, probably more, actually.
Okay. I think that's all I have for questions too, and then just like a lot of feedback and comments. But certainly hearing a lot of the questions here, I mean, you can kind of just get the sense like we're just trying to get this right and it's, it's a tricky site.
Yeah, I've been following.
To meet all of the demands.
Obviously, that's what we're here for, is to find out what your thoughts are.
Sure.
And so, yeah, so we know how to move forward if we.
Let's just go around and just maybe share our comments. Does that work for everyone? Or do we, do we want any discussion back and forth or is people feel good just kind of sharing feedback? Okay, yeah.
So, who's biked on Vernon Avenue? Okay, so is it protected or unprotected, the bike lanes? It's unprotected.
Not enjoyable.
So, it's not enjoyable?
I go on that sidewalk.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. And do motorists drive the speed limit? No, not at all, right? So, so if someone is going northeast on Vernon Avenue and they, and they see this place and they want to turn into it or whatever, right? They're probably not looking for cyclists, right? So, but there's a car coming in the opposite direction. So, the conflict you often get with bike lanes is that, especially where people aren't expecting them, is that, you know, they're like, they go, they start to go and then a car, and then, you know, because they're trying to beat the car, they're not really looking. And then they see a cyclist. And this is how pedestrians die, right? And they, you know, it's the old trolley question, I don't know if this is urbanism thing, but where it's like, you know, what do you do? Do you, do you crash into the other car and kill everybody? Or do you kill the cyclist? Or do you, you know, and hopefully, we're not going to run into that situation, but the busier this place is, the more conflicts there are going to be at these entry and exit points. And so, because you're going to be, people are doing lefts in and they're also going to be doing lefts out, so you're going to have the same sort of thing. And people are just looking for cars. They're not looking, this is why motorcyclists die, because, you know, the bumper stickers, "Start seeing motorcyclists," right? Cyclists are even worse because they're, people aren't, motorists aren't looking for them. And I'm not blaming motorists because it's just the way things are or whatever, but it just makes it really, really dangerous for here. So, so we've all, it sounds like we've all biked on, or most of us have biked on Vernon Avenue. And, and cars, they're not paying attention, they swerve in and out of the bike lane. I mean, I've seen that, I have it on video. You know, it's like, you just don't feel safe. So, having another car-oriented business that's just going to add more cars to the situation and more conflict, that's my concern, or one of my concerns.
I can see your point. I think, I mean, anything desirable there will bring traffic of some sort. So, like, it sounds like the concern is something that's just that much more intense, right? I mean, if it were a sit-down restaurant, you're still going to have the same issue, just less often.
Right, it's the intensity, it's more opportunity for conflict.
Okay.
Question for the bikes.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, I would go into, I think it's Bredesen Park with my kids sometimes and I would take the bike and I would go down Vernon. So, I totally recognize how fast folks move, but I'm wondering if, with the traffic study, right, if, if it could be designed in a way, and I know this has the arrow in and the arrow out, if you designate one entry point and one exit point, if that's going to help prevent the multiple, you know, left turns, as you cannot say, if they're coming up on Vernon, making a left turn into that first parking space, prevent that, and just make it an exit space so that folks won't go into that location. And then on 60th Street, where I live, on France and 60th in that area, I've seen folks put up like these like PVC-type poles to kind of separate the, just give some level of protection between the bike lane and the street. That might be a mitigation type tool. I, I'm just bringing this up as, is there ways that we could mitigate somebody risk that you're identifying through design of entry and exit points and maybe something to protect the bike lanes, especially in this area, so that we could reduce any potential conflict during those peak hours where we think most people would be moving? So, that's just my thought.
Can we put up just for a minute, there was a slide, I think, that had the definition of neighborhood, neighborhood commercial and the comprehensive plan context on it? Want to look at that one more time? Thanks for putting that up. I wanted to check it because this doesn't, doesn't specifically define scope, like geographic scope of a neighborhood commercial business. It could be all of Dina for all work and, you know, it could be something that goes well beyond what I would think of as a neighborhood within a Dina service. Thank you.
I was thinking about the bike stuff too, because I'm kind of a bike advocate like you, Lou. I raised my, when you said, "Did anybody bike on Vernon?", I did one time. And then I said I'd never do it again because the bike lanes aren't safe. I think you were getting at that. But it seems like, I mean, what do you think about the idea that, and it's true of Wooddale, I mean, I always think of Wooddale, the bike project they did in Wooddale where they just painted a new stripe and then put, and then didn't take the center stripe off well, and now the cars actually drive down the bike lane where they weren't doing that before and it's even more unsafe than before. But it just feels like adding one little spot, just, it's unsafe now, it's going to continue to be unsafe in the future for bikers. Isn't the solution to make a better bike infrastructure, create a raised bike lane that's protected and off the street? I mean, I don't know, as an advocate, I would rather see that. I don't think anyone's going to, in their right minds, going to bike with their family down Vernon, it's too unsafe. Only hardcore bikers, you, maybe you would, but like, I think, or someone who's not a seasoned biker, comfortable with, I mean, everybody knows what it's like to have to look over your shoulder for the car that's going to, going to turn on red or whatever and hit you. But I, so I just think that most people aren't going to bike on Vernon, I think it's too unsafe regardless of what type of business goes there. That's just my reaction to that. So, I'm wondering whether, what the, and the other thing I'm thinking about is, we've seen so many ideas come through here and fail. We are looking at the restrictions of the site. I mean, if a small business like this can't go there, what can? I mean, is it just, if it's not something like this, does it just sit and bank it forever? I mean, I'm trying to imagine, because I think everybody's feeling like, well, there could be some kind of business that goes there. Well, what, if it's not something like this, I mean, it's just genuinely a question, what is it? Or is this, or are we talking about, you know, wanting to rezone and propose amendments to larger swaths of parcels along Vernon to encourage a more wholesome type of redevelopment than we're talking about? So, I just, if we're sticking with this site, I guess the question I'd be interested in knowing Commissioner's thoughts about is, if this wouldn't work, what would? Because otherwise, we have to say no to everything. I mean, I'm kind of inclined to think maybe it could work because, maybe it could work because even though it would increase the risk that you're talking about, I totally agree with you about all that. There's still on, I think the fixing the danger on the bike is a, is an infrastructure question, that whoever owns the street should deal with by making it a desirable place to bike that's safe. But until they do that, I'm open to thinking about creative ways to get a little life back into this neighborhood. I've heard a lot of people say, "Oh, it's like, you know, it sounds kind of nice." So, just more interested in the Commissioner's thoughts about those types of concepts.
Just to keep the conversation going, on that, on that point, Commissioner Bornstein, so, like you, I've been kind of frustrated to see failure, failure, failure and, and okay, what are we going to do? But I'd be interested in how, what your reaction to the possibility of just sticking with what's in the comprehensive plan as multifamily, put four townhomes in there like we did on, on Valley View, and maybe wouldn't even have to have, possibly have the garage doors in the front, and maybe there's a way to have a service road in the back. You shaking your head, Jimmy? There's not space?
I think that's why I was asking at the beginning.
What?
You're going to wait a while, otherwise people would be knocking on the door to have done that in the last two, three years. I'm open, that's why I was, I, in concept, I totally opened that idea. I think that's why I was asking earlier.
Sorry.
Would anyone actually do that? Effectively on this, I don't, I don't know enough about whether that would actually happen.
Yeah, I don't either.
But conceptually, I agree with you, but if that's not realistic, then something like this seems better than nothing.
No, that's a great point, but could, can you go say a little bit more about why that's doable on Valley View but not on Vernon?
Yeah, timing is certainly a lot to do with it, just right now, certain things aren't penciling out and the multifamily market in general. And if there's variances at play, I mean, I've heard firsthand from developers that they're not going to, they're not going to even submit because they've gone through some frustrating processes like that particular project you're referring to, where they pretty much got full approvals and then at the site plan got, you know, 180.
That was a subdivision issue though, wasn't it?
No, it was PUD related. So, like this, I mean, like there, there's a cost to the land, adaptive reuse of just using what's already there is just inherently going to be the cheapest option for it. And that's, that's the variations we've seen to date. You know, maybe, maybe if this property included 50 feet to the west of that, you know, there's like some condos to the west and there's a big buffer there, you know, if they wanted to sell a chunk of that land to this person and you got more from the city and you just had more space to work with, I think you could see something that's, that's getting to that right density to make someone approach us. But from all we've heard, there just, there hasn't been a serious push down that right now. And maybe, maybe it's a couple of years until that happens, but then to Commissioner Bornstein's point, it's like, how long do we want to wait?
Yep, staff did receive some calls, inquiries about the potential of doing housing and, you know, I, you mentioned the process of getting variances, you know, there's some uncertainty there. So, none of those phone calls that I received inquiring about residential chose to move forward.
Because there would be a rezone and variances. And if it was townhomes, it'd be subdivision too, it'd be the whole nine yards.
Correct. It wouldn't be a comprehensive plan amendment, so it's a three-vote item.
There's a plus there.
But it would be a rezoning with variances and a subdivision.
One of the things I've been thinking about, and I'll share more about this later, but this, I know there were some concerns from neighbors of like, hey, you do this and it might not pan out and, you know, something else is going to happen there. I guess why I'm in favor just in general of the switch to PCD1 is because you can do multifamily in a PCD1. So, like, when that time comes and let's say that someone gets a little more creative with the land around this and then it makes sense, like you could fold, let's say this project is successful, maybe they take the main floor, you know, and have that type of facility or, or a sit-down restaurant in something that does provide some of that stuff we do want to see. But currently, with how small this site is, I mean, that's the challenge. And that's the challenge we saw in Wooddale Valley View, not on the site, I mean, that site that they built the townhomes on, we originally saw, more dense, you know, with the basement. And it just gets too expensive when you're on a small site. You're just limited with all these other constraints of height and making the most of that space and parking it. You just lose that usable land. So, you often don't see something on here that's going to, otherwise, we would have seen it or someone would have come forward. Like, that's just, we haven't seen anything like it. So, I think until we either get more land or costs come down, we're just going to keep seeing something sit. But, yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of comments on that. I think Commissioner Bornstein, you know, the question of like, what else could we see here? I, I think in the email from Director Teague with PCD1 sub-district, there was like a list of potential options. I think antique shops, art galleries, art studios, barber shops, beauty shops, you know, these kind of things. And that was a pretty good list. I think with this spot, a couple of constraints, right, is the size and where it's positioned. On Valley View, it was kind of an extension of a node. So, you kind of extend that, so it's a natural fit to kind of have that density and have those townhomes fit on a small piece of land. This one, it's really small and it's a profitability issue. And so, I think a high-velocity, high-turn business with high margins would work here. But of these different options that you could do with PCD1, what types of business could you have low-traffic, high-margin that would fit on this size? And I think that's the constraint that anybody who's looking at this property is going to ask themselves. This type of business where it's a delivery or takeout business has that high-margin, I mean, high-velocity type of a feel to it. But again, what I'm trying to balance here is the volume of vehicles coming in and out and will it pose a safety risk to folks who move on Vernon? So, I like your point with, no one's going to want to ride on Vernon because it's not really a super-friendly spot. So, it's more so about traffic during peak hours and when does that clash? And when does that line up is when you have the most issues. So, if we could somehow think through that and manage that, I feel like this could be a really good potential spot for this kind of business.
So, I appreciate your reuse of the building. I think that is a, a great idea. As far as rezoning, I think it's something that we have to do, whether or not we do it on a pro forma basis before we get a request or not, because what we have now is work, is, is unworkable. I mean, this is kind of a one-off in terms of the property that it is. So, you know, we, it's unimaginable that we're going to find some auto, you know, I mean, cars are high margin, but, you know, this isn't the right size for dealership. But, you know, that, that's not going to work. So, I think it goes without saying that it's rezoning, whether or not it affects the comprehensive plan or it's just a rezoning along with variances. And maybe we need to look at doing it without, you know, without having a request there, just to make it attractive or appealing because it is such an unusual parcel. The issue that I do have, however, is the traffic. I think it is such a busy street and the times that I think to avoid... I think it is such a busy street, and the times that I think to avoid additional traffic on this road is exactly when you are busiest, and that is a concern of mine. You know, I think, you know, between four and seven, four and six, five and seven, you know, whatever you mentioned, you've got people coming home from work, you've still got kids on buses, because you've got, you know, a fair number of schools and school buses that are crossing all of those areas, whether you're going to high school or countryside, I mean, or Creek Valley. A lot, you've got a lot of buses, school buses going up and down that road, along with commuters, and to add, you know, dinner traffic to that, the fact that you're, that you're turning left, I think it's, it's, it's very difficult, and I don't doubt for a minute that when you talk to the citizenry that, you know, lives there, they didn't want access from those streets, and I understand that. But I think to better serve the western part of Edina, you almost need to do that in order to alleviate the extra pressure that's going to be on Vernon Avenue. I don't see, I think you need some kind of a valve there, you know, in terms of the traffic. And the fact that in areas of potential change, we have been talking, as Commissioner Miranda mentioned, we have been talking about this as becoming a corridor, or becoming, you know, a high-volume bus route. So it seems like a conundrum to see this as an area of potential change and then be putting additional traffic with lots of turns in there. So I think it would serve the western part of Edina very well, but I, traffic is my biggest concern, and that's within the context of certainly having to change the zoning.
So I think it was Commissioner Bornstein who brought up, who just mentioned in passing, you know, the owner of this road or whatever. Well, the city of Edina doesn't actually own this road, it's a county road.
That's what I was wondering.
Right, it's a county road.
Like France.
Yep, met like France Avenue, so, yeah, and 66. And so, you know, they work with cities and, you know, they partner with cities, they're not going to like do stuff against the city's will and vice versa. But it is an issue that has to be considered. And so, you know, my concern isn't, I mean, you know, there's going to be conflicts everywhere, as Commissioner Smith said, but you know, it's the intensity of use that I'm really worried about here compared to, you know, previous, previous suggestions. So, you know, and we're all like, you know, oh, this is a conundrum, and it's like, well, that's our job, we're the planning commission, this is what we're supposed to do, right? So, so, and as Commissioner Padilla said, that, you know, we're working on this, you know, in areas of change, this is one area that we've identified that might make our list, it's not finalized yet, but it's certainly Vernon Avenue has been something that we've talked about. And so again, so this is, so this is our, this is our job. The thing is, you know, the commission wanted to do this a few years ago, and the city council negated that, so, so now we're, we're at a disadvantage because we don't have the proper zoning for this, for this slot. Same thing happened in Lincoln and Lundon area where we proposed that a couple of years ago, they nixed it, and then, you know, the residents came back and wanted it, planned for it. So, so it's our job to plan, and we need to plan, the whole point of planning is planning ahead of time, and also not doing spot zoning, spot changes. So this like, is wrong on every level, it's not, you know, it's not just the bikes, this is wrong on like so many different levels. You know, and I feel bad for the landowner, but they've had it for many years, and they could have, you know, attempted change earlier than, they chose to let the existing business run there. So it is a difficult spot, and you know, I think as a city, we don't want to put landowners in the position of having an unbuiltable lot, it's probably illegal to do that, right? So we do need to come up with something, but whether we need to come up with it, you know, like right now, I think is a really poor planning, planning decision. So I think, you know, we and the city council should say, wait till we go through this areas of future change and see what comes of it, and that would be a good time to like evaluate the neighborhood, evaluate the corridor, and say, okay, what do we want to see here? You know, involve the neighborhood, we've never had a corridor planning thing before, it'd be new for the city, but you know, what, what makes sense here, what fits with our climate action plan? Because this business does not fit with our climate action plan, okay? So, you know, for, for all these reasons, I just think that this, this really doesn't work. Now, one question I have is that, have, have any of the adjacent landowners talked about, I don't know, like buying the land or, or selling some of their land to, for this land or anything? Anyone talk to anyone else about that, does anyone know? Make it a little bit bigger so it'd be easier to build on or something?
I've heard there were preliminary conversations that went nowhere.
Okay.
With the one to the west.
Okay. So, you know, the, the land use that, that was grandfathered in, was, A, was grandfathered in the first place, and B, really is not anything, you know, car washes, car, muffler places, that sort of thing, isn't the kind of business that the city wants, and in a lot of senses, those businesses don't make sense when we go to EVs anyway. So the city has rationale for saying, you know, we don't want anything like this, you know, here, because it doesn't make sense. But I really think we need to, we need a bigger picture before we can really make an intelligent decision here, and before we want to like rezone it and also do a change to the comprehensive plan that we submit to the Met Council. I mean, we're, I, I just think that's a big mistake. It's not, if that's not planning, that's, that's just spur-of-the-moment stuff. Yeah, that's reacting, thank you, thank you.
This is way more complicated than I thought it was going to be. I want to thank you for coming in and, and sharing some time with us tonight. A few thoughts, and not in any particular order. First, I have a real, I have real trouble with this as PCD1, mostly for the reasons that Commissioner Miranda describes about it being, it's, it's not a restaurant, it's a commercial kitchen. And if you look at all the other 54 uses for PCD1, there really isn't anything that resembles this business format. It's all small, low-impact retail, it's not, it's not delivery and pickup businesses. And, and I would love to be a customer of the businesses you're proposing, but it, it just has a different format than everything else of these other 54 approved uses in PCD1. So first thing, I have real trouble with this as a PCD1. Second thing is, you know, I really, I really value the conversation we had about, you know, things keep failing on this site. And my, my mindset around that is, well, it's not, I'm not sure it's our job to decide when to settle necessarily, and decide that enough is enough, we got to do something rather than nothing. Maybe it is, and they just didn't cover that in training, but it just, it doesn't feel like what our role as a planning commission is, and there's so many factors that can cause particular uses or particular models to work or not work, not least of which, how much somebody paid for the parcel to begin with. So, I mean, I have a hard time, you know, decisively saying or, or, you know, feeling, okay, enough's enough, we got to approve this because the two other things failed, and we got to do something because I don't like vacant lots. I don't like vacant lots either, but I have, it's hard for me to know, okay, when is that time when you should settle? Third thing that troubles me a lot is this is a single parcel, commercial unit, I just don't, I don't like that. It just rubs me the wrong way, and to me, that's a warning sign, like, you know, something's not right here. If you've got one tiny commercial parcel in a sea of R1 and R2, doesn't feel right. I can't prove, I mean, I can't tell you exactly why it doesn't feel right, I didn't go to planning school, but something doesn't feel right about that. And the last thing is, you know, I asked Director Teague earlier about, you know, how do, how do we know when, when it's appropriate to amend the comprehensive plan? And my thoughts, for what it's worth, and it's just my two cents, I think we should change the comprehensive plan when we think an alternative use better serves the goals of the city than the current plan prescribes. And I don't see that here. I mean, I, as much as I, like I said, would love to be a customer of this business, I don't see why that serves the city's interests better than housing, frankly. Knowing that there are challenges, whatever direction somebody might want to go with this particular plot. So those are, those are the kinds of things I'm struggling with right now.
The one thing I've been, I'm going ahead.
All right, you got it.
I've been thinking about this a lot too, because of the previous failed projects, and I agree with you, Commissioner Alkire, about this piece of land being a one-off. But I'm also a little frustrated that this issue keeps getting kicked down the road, because this is what upsets landowners. You know, it's a vacant property, we can't decide anything, government is being slow, we are participating in that. And so I struggle with that, that, that we are part of creating, you know, now the third time, creating something that nobody can get through. Even if we have littler, or, you know, whatever power we have, we're part of that. And, and I actually, I agree with you about the intensity of use and the number of cars turning in and out. But I'm, but I'm going to say, I'm going to push back on the climate plan a little bit because when you have businesses in the middle of neighborhoods, and people don't have to drive so far, so I'm actually okay, right? I love being able to walk down the corner and pick up a pizza or get a coffee. So I actually think it would keep some people out of their cars, or they just stop on their way home and don't have to make an extra trip somewhere else. And I also think when someone is delivering four pizzas rather than four cars going in and picking up a pizza, it's a net positive too. So I'm going to push back on the climate plan a little bit. So I think this is a tough one, and I think it's becoming, you know, part of our job to help figure out what to do on this.
Yeah, I'll try to be short on this one. I, I would agree, you know, we keep kicking the can down the road, we should, I'm leaning towards some kind of action. I do also understand the need for process, and we have to take it back, take a study, take a look at it. My biggest concern is on safety. I know we could make it work based on the PCD, the designation, the labeling, the coding, the zoning, we could, you know, that's the administrative side, the paperwork side. What I'm looking at more of is if something goes here, is it going to hurt or harm something? You know, bikers, drivers. So if it's even possible that we could do some kind of a modeling or a study to, on a mitigation plan, that says, here's what's possible here, here's what the volume looks like, and here's the risk that we, we could run into, and here's the dangers that we have. If, if someone could spell that out, so now we have a sense of what's the harm here, it makes it easier to make these decisions, I think. And so I don't know if it's a parking study or what it's going to look like, but if we could somehow model the movement of vehicles, people, and traffic in this area at peak times, it gives us a data point that we could say, what's the boundary of the harm? And then we could back into what, what kind of business would actually fit that. So that's, that's what I'm looking at. I feel like that's going to get us faster to a decent answer than having to go through, you know, kicking the ball down the road and rejecting businesses without data to look at to say what's going to work. So that's kind of my thinking on this one. I don't know if Director Teague, if this is something that the developer has to put together, or if this city could...
It would, as any rezoning site plan applications would get a traffic study is required, so that would be part of any formal application.
Okay, thank you.
I agree, kind of like what you were saying earlier, I think it actually reduces our climate emissions that we're doing if we have it closer to kind of community nodes and where the community is, because if they're driving and picking it up on the way, I believe the next closest one would be probably that Domino's and the, by the Dairy Queen off 100. And I think having like closer to our community is really what we're looking for in kind of reducing the distance that people need to travel. And then I also think it's kind of unusual that we have kind of something that comes in here and basically fits what we had before. I think it's really just looking at the use that is basically the discussion.
All right, I don't know how to keep this short, this is, there's a lot of stuff here. Like, am I looking at the best possible plan that could go there and like satisfy everything? Absolutely not, because I think the constraints of the site prevent an ideal scenario. I mean, you said if, if we could get 25 more parking spots on there, I think we would have something that everyone would like, you know, a neighborhood, a neighborhood know that you could drive to not spill over parking into, you know, the neighbors, and then it's comfortably parked. I mean, this type of concept is, well, I guess not in Edina, but there is like a Carboni's right by 50th and France that is just takeout delivery. I mean, that is a concept that is a restaurant, and you know, they don't have a lot of parking there, and doesn't seem to be a problem. Yes, it's a totally different area, but no one's parking in a ramp to then go, you know, pick up a Carboni's pizza. I think what I'm just struggling with in general is, is the space to, to get something that we would like to see here. And I, I kind of, I'm, I'm on the side with Meriwether where, I mean, I believe a commercial corridor or a neighborhood corridor, that's more dense and kind of what the areas of potential change working group, as well as that student group, you know, like it supports more mixed use along a corridor, will allow people to walk to things more, get on a bike, get on a bus. But if we just line this whole corridor with housing only, I think we lose on that potential forever. And I think having one little piece of commercial something in there kind of sets, in my opinion, like a lucky precedent to reserve the potential for commercial, even small retail activity. So this is such a minimal like adaptive reuse, just in, in its scope, but it could, like it definitely has more intense outcomes from what you've mentioned, Commissioner Miranda, for sure. But I'm struggling to see what, what could possibly go there if we study this area and we guide it towards something better, unless something gives on the land side in the meantime, we're just going to be in this, this circular situation. And I support the change to PCD1 versus PCD4, like let's get it away from what we definitely don't want it to be in the future, and I think no one wants it to be a car wash, a gas station, or an auto body shop. But there's a lot of uses in PCD1 that I think people would support, a restaurant being one of them. I don't, I don't see it as a commercial or industrial operation as much as others. I, I think the ideal scenario is if we had time and somehow there was more land that could be given toward parking to make something work that kind of appeases everyone and lets people linger in a commercial area. But I don't think we're there yet and potentially we might not ever be there or we're waiting for the city to negotiate the land. So, I mean, I'm sympathetic to getting this through, and I don't see this as a dire outcome. I think this stimulates that area and provides a lot of good use and a lot of good reasons for people to swing by there on their way home. I mean, I drove by this and back every day for 10 years. I biked my kids down Vernon once a week, multiple summers, you know, like pulling off and getting a pizza, either biking or driving. I'm not adding that trip, it's just, there's a lot of people that are taking this road already. I don't think it's going to create new trips as much as it's just going to pull people off existing trips. So in an effort to support what you guys are doing, because I am in favor if the plan gets a little better, so I just offer some specifics. I think from what you're showing with the one ways, you're trying to do one-way traffic, right? One in, one out. Potentially consider if you can rearrange the stalls to switch that so then if someone pulls in and they miss a spot, they can circle by just turning right. Like if you came in on the left side and you go out and you miss a spot and you want to come back in, you're not turning left across traffic, just from a potential safety perspective, that would be better. If there's potential with the city, Carrie, I know we can't do it on like Middletown right away or County right away, but if they push the parking lot and fence to the property line and just push that landscaping back, I mean, does the city make, you know, if they paid for all those trees and plantings, like does the city allow that to be planted on City right away? Or then maybe we could get more parking spaces or more green space and provide more room just onsite in general to like move cars more safely and people. I know we've put it on the table and it didn't happen because we couldn't plant stuff in Middletown right away, but I think...
We could on that north side, yes.
But yeah, what I'd suggest is move the fence to the property line and plant those trees because again, like east of Eden Prairie Road, there is a 60-foot right away. I mean, there's a lot of space that, who knows how that's going to be used? So it'd be nice if you could push your lot toward the back and maybe get some more parking spots and maybe make, you know, take away spots elsewhere and have more green space. I think there is some creativity that could be done there. And maybe then you can have that curb cut moved to the right. Again, like what I would like to see here is just like, you know, it's like you see things kind of like this, like, you know, the Dairy Queens that they're not like, they're not delivery, but they're just like walk up or you drive up and it's just the little stand, there's nowhere in there to sit. But there's a few tables out, so someone that does takeout or walks up does have a chance to like eat there. I mean, I would like that whole like spot south of the building to be a patio or a green space, you know, where people can linger that, you know, do walk from the neighborhood. I think if you don't build anything, like we just lose the chance for people to do the right thing that they'd want to do. And yeah, there's a little extra mess, but if there's no expectation of service, like you just take your takeout out there, maybe there's some other thing you could get, maybe you could pick up a drink or something, I don't know. But I feel like what we lose here with this is, I mean, I don't, again, see that this is like an industrial machine. It's more of like, it is just a takeout, delivery restaurant, but we're losing the potential for community to gather. And even if we could get a fraction of it, and I'm just thinking of like those Dairy Queens that are all over the place with not much parking, lots of people go there.
Right next to their location.
And Montanca has one.
Last night, I mean, driving by, it's a good, it's exactly what we got. Set at a couple of tables outside.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so I think from what the plan could show, just being a little more toward like a neighborhood commercial is some sort of like gathering aspect. And I think if it's completely focused on cars and deliveries and takeout, like then you are all, you're automatically incentivizing that intensity that Commissioner Miranda's talking about. So I think there's, I think there's like a small infrastructure piece of this that like with the plan that I would support is like a hybrid version of this where, yeah, that's your business, but there are some provisions to allow people to hang out. And I think if you push that fence back and the city's okay with planting trees on their right away instead of your property, I think now you've just got five, 10 feet to work with, and maybe that can move parking elsewhere. And I'm just saying these things because, you know, we might not support it, but the city council might support this. This is exactly what happened at the Caribou site when there's a double lane drive-through going around right on the corner of Grandview. The commission shut it, like recommended against it eight to one, and the city council unanimously supported it. So I want to give you some helpful tips in case, you know, this does go forward, and I think this could be a win for that area. It sounds like most neighbors, because there's no chance of spill over, they're okay with it. I think the shift to PCD1 allows for a modest future redevelopment if that were to occur that is, that would automatically be more in line with, I think, what the comprehensive plan wants to see. Like, again, there's a lot of talk of strategic redevelopment. Anything that adds the chance for people to walk or bike to a place, I think this does. I think it does achieve more of the climate action plan than, let's say, if this sits vacant, you know, people are going to drive farther and out of their way to go to places. And I think this gives a chance for people to walk to, to bike to. Granted, it is unsafe, but I mean, I've taken two kids in a burly there lots of times. It sucks, but you can do it.
You're just more skilled at biking than the rest of us.
I just closed my eyes the whole time, fingers crossed. One second then. Yeah, like if there were a chance to lose parking, I know you have like that 24 feet, you know, the drive lane, that can reduce to 22 feet. I've seen that in parking ramps. Like if we can tighten some of the, especially since it's a one-way, you really don't need 24 feet of space. I think you can squish some of your parking in there to get more in a concentrated area and then free it up for green space and, you know, like, again, I'm picturing like that Dairy Queen kind of gathering space where that Dairy Queen really is, like those concepts really are a drive-up, pickup, not necessarily delivery, but that's the only component that's different here. The comprehensive plan, you know, again, a lot of it talks about having more mixed use in areas, not just one development. So having a different use in a neighborhood is what we want to see in the city, which the county qualifies as urban. And I think all of us can agree, like the west part of Edina is not really urban. So if we just, again, fill this with housing, like the comprehensive plan is suggesting, I think we're losing an opportunity to kind of redefine Vernon in a way that is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I don't know. I'm torn because again, this isn't ideal in any way, but I think there could be something good here with a new, a new site plan that offers some green space, a gathering spot, maybe tweak the in and out just so you're thinking if people have to circle, it wouldn't cause conflicts of, you know, turning out left to do so. The sidewalk conversation, again, if they built it, it would be a sidewalk that ends on one side and ends on the other. So I would expect the city to absolutely get right in line and finish that sidewalk on both sides. And I think if this project goes forward and a new sidewalk finishes that whole north stretch, like that's also a win. So I don't know. I think there's, compared to the Green Drop site where, you know, you could just have queues of people going out onto Vernon and it's really just this transactional drop-off to an overcrowded restaurant, I think this is something that will work for us and you guys. But you've heard it up here, it's kind of split. So maybe, maybe just consider some of those times in the meantime before you get to the city council, take some of our feedback, and I guess I open up to other commissioners' comments, too.
I was just going to talk about the sidewalk, which you just did. I mean, the opportunity for getting additional sidewalk there, I think, is a positive thing. And we're going to present areas of potential change coming up in the next few months here. So it might be worth watching what happens there in the meantime.
When is that going to be? Do you have a plan for that?
So that's going to be part of, I was going to announce that at the Commissioner's comments, but yeah.
Any other comments, you guys, Commissioner Miranda?
So as the only person here who was on the Climate Action Plan Committee, I can say pretty definitively that this doesn't address climate in any way and that having this as pick-up and drop-off on the way home doesn't really address anything, and this is just way too intensive use.
I think I'll save conversations with you later, work session or something else. I definitely disagree, but again, we have a lot of discretion here. So like Planner Teague showed, I mean, this is where we ought to split in opinion based off of a lot of things, and we have the right to do so. So whether that's, you know, in concert with each other, you know, do we want to deviate from the comprehensive plan for the zoning or not, we definitely have the discretion to do so. And I think you're seeing that come out. Any other comments?
I was just going to ask you a question. So procedurally, say they came back with a specific proposal, addressed some of the feedback you talked about, made it a little bit more of an amenity for the neighborhood to, and then we, Carrie, you were talking about there are certain, I can't remember what the thresholds were, but the standard for approving something is there's a higher vote threshold that needs to be met. Is that by the planning commission or the council?
City council.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
I mean, either way, I mean, I think just taking in the feedback, guys deciding what you want to do, if you want to make a proposal that the council might weigh in on, I think incorporating some of the stuff that you heard tonight will probably improve your chances. So I just always like being a part of this group because it's really smart feedback across the board. And I kind of came in mixed on this one, too. So thanks, Commissioner, for all your comments. It was helpful for me.
Any other final questions you guys might have for us?
We very much appreciate everyone's feedback, you know, positive and negative, this is what we're after. It's actually fantastic. I mean, I'll be honest, I've been to a lot of different sort of planning committees.
Come on up to it.
I was just going to say that I've been to a lot of different planning commissions of this nature as part of my job, and this kind of feedback and this kind of interaction is actually very refreshing. It's not, it's not common, so I appreciate that very much.
One thing I would say with regard to Commissioner Smith, the, because we were back of enveloping a lot of numbers there, and I mean, I'm on, I drive Vernon every day multiple times and I don't, you know, if we, as far as the traffic study, obviously we're going to probably be required to do that regardless. But back of the envelope math, as I was sitting in my chair, I mean, if we add, if we had 80 cars added to Vernon in a night, that would be a lot, in my opinion, for what we anticipate flow-wise. And driving on Vernon multiple times a day, I don't know that you would notice that. I mean, we're talking about, you know, 300 pizzas, it's 150 pizzas, but a lot of those go out in multiples, you know? Generally, people order more than one pizza on our orders. So I mean, those, the number of cars is, I think, a lot less intense than what was being discussed in general. And we can, I can drill down on that, too, from, you know, based on our current store. But again, Vernon is a busy road. I don't really know that you would notice any flow changes with our use there.
Something that we address in the campaign.
Yeah, and we'll obviously get to the bottom of that, but I was, I was listening to those numbers and doing them in my head, and no, I don't think it's, it's not, it's, I don't think it's significant personally, and we'll drill down on that with the study.
Thank you.
And can I ask one more question? You know, you asked the question about whether this concept or that concept is better. I mean, in reality, that, that concept is better, our current location, we do, we're able to do a lot more business. That being said, you know, coming into this, I was very reluctant to even talk about seating and, you know, hearing your suggestion to an outdoor space, obviously that would be great. I'm happy to, you know, maintain something like that. But do you, as a group, and I know Commissioner Bennett is recommending that we maybe add something that to the city or not, but is that a consensus that exists between, I guess, as a whole or as a majority or whatnot up here? That we do provide some type of, because it would be awesome. I mean, you know, it would make it an amenity to the neighborhood and be really cool, especially in the summer. Is that the route that you guys as a whole would recommend? Because I think it's a tricky situation.
I think there is some fundamental, like I think people just aren't necessarily going to support whatever it might be. But in general, the planning commission supports extra green space and places for people to gather. But maybe I don't need to speak for you guys. I mean, if we, let's just say if we saw this plan and say those, those parking stalls were gone and it was green space with, you know, four tables and like, is that a better-looking plan to you if they're adequately parked?
Well, I can answer for myself. I would say, yes, it's a better-looking plan. Seems like there's going to be some tension because as soon as you have more people sitting, then your earlier concern about parking spots comes back because the lot's not going to flow as fast as it was before. So, but I mean, assuming you could sort all that out and have some seating and be more of a gathering place, it fits more in PCD1, in my opinion. So that would be much better from that perspective. Still have an issue with the comprehensive plan in my mind, but I can't say that that's, you know, irreversible or something I couldn't get over for the right project. So I feel better about it, but I wouldn't be 100% on it at that point for myself.
Yeah, just to add one comment on that. Yeah, that's a good question. I'm trying to think about what we said about Keys when they were trying to look at this spot, and I want to be fair, right? Because they wanted to have a much bigger restaurant footprint with outdoor patio and a whole bunch of other things, and that didn't work out so well. Neighbors pushed back pretty, pretty hard. I think their concept had like maybe alcohol and like people hanging out and noise and a bunch of other factors that you guys aren't really proposing here. Having a place to sit down in some green space is kind of like human behavior, like if you, if you have that, would that make people want to walk there and sit down or would you want to drive their park and sit down? And so that's what I'm not sure about. I think overall, having a nice little small patio where you could just kind of hang out during a jog, you stop by, grab some pizza, you have a seat, that's nice, you know? It certainly would encourage folks to come here and use it. But would it drive people to park and use it? That's what I'm not sure about. But if that plan comes back and I see a small patio spot, I think it's a nice, a nice fixture.
To be honest, I think even if there isn't like designated seating spots, I could see a lot of people in the top right corner here gathering and sitting under the trees and some shade. I mean, I think regardless, even if the design is, we want you in and out, people are going to find a spot to sit down, whether it be the curb or under those trees.
The very thing came up when we were walking London Dairy. People were talking about the teenagers where there was a lack of places to sit down and the teenagers were sitting on top of the retaining walls and in the grassy area. So when you talk about the Dairy Queen or a little sitting area, I think about teenagers hanging out on Friday night, that's what comes to my mind.
And actually, I think about her, or maybe you. And actually, I think about her, or maybe you, the Dairy Queen in our parking lot at station currently doesn't have any seating, and they do pretty much exactly what you're talking about, they sit on the curb, or, they're eating ice cream cone out of pizza, in fairness.
I also sat through that planning commission meeting, or city council meeting, where there were 80 people testifying, half on one side and half on the other, about restaurant. So you might, it might stir, right, we said no to that before, and it becomes...
It's, but, yeah, I guess the suggestion, too, just to provide context for others, again, it's like more of that seasonal, you know, business play, where, again, if we provide nothing, then people definitely won't as likely walk or bike and just linger a little. But if you don't have, like, a full dining area inside, I mean, that's why those Dairy Queens have such small footprints, parking, all that, it's very quick. I mean, someone's sitting there eating an ice cream cone, walks away, bikes up to it. I mean, I just, I feel like that type of addition here would make it a little sweeter. But, again, that's maybe just my opinion, it sounds like others would, in general, like to see that versus not. And then the traffic study, I guess, that would take into account that, right, Carrie?
It could, yes.
So maybe some of it is, like, yeah, there is, you know, they take it into account, or they don't, and then we see the difference of what the traffic is.
Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Thanks for being bold and coming back for another, you know, we don't want to strike three, but thank you for being bold and stepping up and trying to get something there. Thank you, guys. All right. Again, no action requested there, just non-biting feedback, and we'll turn it over now to chair member comments. I think Lou, you mentioned you were saving some really juicy nuggets for, all right, we'll turn it over to you.
Well, you know, before this stuff that I had prepared to talk about, it just suddenly occurred to me that, you know, if the city council intentionally underplanned and delayed planning, that's a strategy, so that we have to deal with everything ad hoc, and we have uncomfortable conversations, and we're not at each other's throats, but, you know, it makes it uncomfortable for everyone, and if you don't plan, that's what happens. Anyway, first of all, I'd like to say that it's, even though it's making congestion worse and traffic worse, I'm thrilled to see parts of France Avenue closed for the E-line stations being built. That's gonna be an amazing amenity for the city, much like the Nine Mile Creek Trail that, you know, many people fought against, that now is like the shining jewel of the city. I think the E-line is gonna be very much the same thing, so I'm really excited to see that construction happening. Secondly, and this is all before the change things, there's a book called The 15-Minute City, Hennepin County Library has it, we like to, or certain city council members and mayors like to say that, you know, we are like Paris, and that, you know, the Champs-Elysees is France Avenue or whatever. Well, The 15-Minute City is written by Carlos Moreno, who worked with the mayor of Paris on their plans for making the city much healthier for the Olympics. Okay, so, areas of potential change. So, we've been meeting for months, and actually Commissioner Day, or, yeah, Commissioner Day is not here, but Commissioner Padilla and Commissioner Felth, and I have met a number of times in person, we're done with the in-person meetings, and now we are building our deliverable, which is a list of the areas. So we've discussed at length different potential areas of change for the city, and we've come up with a list, and now we're working on prioritizing it and defining the boundaries for each of those things, and then figuring out, we have a template from the city, but I've got to talk to Addison about, you know, how much detail we can actually put in that report. So we're working on that, working on finishing that up. The plan is to present that to the planning commission at July meeting, and then assuming that gets passed, then presenting it to the city council out there at an August meeting. Yes.
As for context, since we, you know, we saw that awesome report delivered by, you know, the student group that was there, are you guys referencing any piece of that to, like, supplement, you know, and kind of back up some of the stuff you're doing, or are there other pieces of different plans that you're referencing to kind of reinforce these areas, the boundaries, et cetera?
So, yeah, so, well, we were blindsided by that. At our last in-person meeting, which was the day before, or the day it was presented to the planning commission, we found out about it, so, again, the city doesn't seem to be planning very well and telling us what's going on, it seems really odd that that would be like a secret or something. So we didn't, so we had no ability to talk to them or anything, that was just thrown at us. So, what I have done is, and again, we haven't discussed this amongst ourselves yet, but I just kind of got the bones of it out the other day, is that I did put in two points there, which is the main point of agreement and the main point of disagreement that we have with what they're doing, right? We're not four, or six, or eight, or however many of them, you know, full-time students working on our master's thesis or whatever, so we didn't have the time and the resources to dedicate to the mapping and all, you know, the analysis they did or whatever, but we will reference it, but not really in any great detail, because we just, as volunteers and whatever, we just don't really have the time to go into a great detail, but, you know, I mean, just from a high-level view, I think it's okay to say this, but, you know, a major point of agreement, I think, that we have with them is that we're not talking about, like, upzoning the entire city, right? I mean, that's, we're pretty much in agreement on that. I made that statement at the first meeting, and we all pretty much agreed with it, so I don't think there was any dissent on that. And the major point of, not so much, I don't mean, say, disagreement, but divergence in what we're looking at, is that there, what they did is they took our bike and pedestrian plan and assumed it was unchangeable, and tried to adopt their plan to it, so they came up with a dense bicycle-friendly region that we really hadn't talked about. And I don't think anyone really proposed that. So, so that's a difference from us, I think we can have a lot of conversations about that. My argument personally would be that we need, we need to redesign our bike and pedestrian plan, which I know the Transportation Commission, that's part of their 2024 work plan, so I know they're working on that. So, yeah, there's more than one, there's multiple ways to address that, and I think perhaps they didn't chose the best route for that. Is that good? Any other questions on that?
That's helpful, because, I mean, it seemed like a very well-
Oh, it was, yeah.
Presented plan and everything, and so just, I guess, wanted to hear how parallel it was. It seemed parallel, like, in at least geography and-
Yeah, there were a lot of similarities, you know, they don't live here, so I think we have some perhaps more perspective than they do, but they, you know, we don't have master's degrees in planning either, so there were some perspectives they had that we don't. And they certainly got into the analysis and mathematics of it and such that we don't. So anyway, so that's it for the, unless anything you guys want to contribute to that, okay? And the other big thing, of course, is the Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan. Unfortunately, I got sick for the very first public meeting, and I couldn't go, which was, I've been waiting, like, for years to do this thing, right? And I got sick, so I couldn't, but I will ask Commissioner Felth to give a quick little report, I asked her ahead of time, don't worry, on how that meeting went.
The meeting went great. We met at Wolf Park, I think there were about 100 people there. We broke up into a bicycling group, and a walking group, and a staying-back group, and city council was there, and a couple of other commissioners showed up, and kids were engaged, and people were engaged, and people gave a lot of feedback, and they marked on the maps, and they gave us notes, and I think we gathered a lot of background material. It was good.
Is that stuff, I don't know how you're gonna share the, or how you're gonna compile and share the feedback, is it gonna be on Better Together somehow?
We have a steering committee meeting tomorrow, so we'll probably be discussing those things at that meeting. So that was my, my next point, was that we have a steering committee tomorrow to discuss that with all the members of the work plan.
Can I just add to that?
Yep.
So I think stuff like that is really important to publicize, I don't know if, you know, you know, if you could share it on Better Together, images, photos, just, yeah, you know, just to really put it out there that this is how we're working together with community to solve some of these big problems.
Sure, sorry, maybe I wasn't clear. So, we do have a Better Together site, and we do have, there's a mapping exercise on there, and there's, you know, you can just enter, like, a text comment or whatever, what you feel about it, they have a number of questions there, and then for the mapping part, we have, like, four things, like transportation, and recreation, and two other things, where you can put items on the map, and then either answer some questions or just leave some comments about what you want to see, and anyone from Edina can do, I guess anybody could do it, but, you know, we want everybody from Edina to do it, not just people in the neighborhood, but of course, you know, it's important for people in the neighborhood to come on to that. So, yeah, so the more that people can do it, so, yeah, if you're out there, please go ahead and go on Better Together and look for Lincoln and Londonderry, and there are things there that we have today, and then we're gonna be building on that. So, another thing that we're gonna be doing is, so, one of the, and again, I wouldn't say criticism, but one of the things that was noticed, that I heard, an executive committee meeting, was that, for the first meeting, was that even some of the neighbors were surprised that, you know, kind of the age of the people that showed up. So it was very heavily, even though there's a number of young families in the neighborhood, we didn't really get that, they didn't come, you know, and so, so what are we doing wrong? How could we engage them more? So, for example, we're looking at having pop-ups in July, where we're trying to go to, like, a sports activity, you know, in the neighborhood. So neighborhood families would be going to that, and have a pop-up there, and get people who, you know, live in the neighborhood but are younger than the people who come to the things the city plans. Because, you know, they have busy lives, and so if we go to them rather than have them come to us, it's an ability for us to reach out to more people, and reach out to, you know, everybody who lives in the neighborhood, rather than just people who, maybe are retired or whatever, and have time to come to city meetings.
And it is always the most difficult group to get, when you feed your child and bathe your child and put them to bed between six and eight, they're not showing up at a public event, unless it's much earlier and before dinnertime.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you know, some cities do childcare and whatever, and we don't do that sort of thing, but-
Yeah, but which is why we have the interactive map.
Yeah, and we're gonna have multiple pop, it's not just gonna be one, we're gonna be multiple, you know, some, we've already planned, some would be, like, on the trail itself, so people who are using the trail, for example, you know, we could, we could reach them, which would be a mixture, young people, old people, kids, whatnot. So, it is absolutely our intent to reach as many voices, you know, which was part of our plan for how we chose the members of the committee, was we wanted to get, even though Edina isn't super diverse, you know, trying to get as many people of as many different ages and different housing types, you know, on the work group.
Yeah, just one thought, and I think this neighborhood has a magazine, I think they publish a magazine for that community, if you guys get in that magazine, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a for-profit business, actually, but, you know, kind of like, you know, the newspaper in Edina that just went, you know, for pay or whatever. Yeah, we're working with the head of the Parkwood Knowles, I mean, she's part of the committee, so, yes, we're trying to reach out, the consultants are doing an absolutely excellent job, staff is doing an excellent job, it's really, I'm very happy. The only weird thing is that tomorrow, we have an hour, we have an hour for the city's dog and pony show about, what is that called? Did you look at the, what's happening tomorrow?
We're having our monthly meeting for the working group, and anybody who's willing to, can go to it, but it's only the working group that participates in it.
Right.
And this is all on Better Together.
There's an hour dedicated to-
Repeating what happened at the last meeting.
No, 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 an hour is dedicated to, I gotta bring it up here, where is it? Anyway, I'll find it later. The city has some new thing they're going through, and they gave us-
Like a marketing thing?
Like an outreach sort of thing, I mean, not AJ, MJ, thank you. She's in charge of it, so, you know, it's under her purview, but we had a little taste of it at a previous meeting, but there weren't a lot of, a lot of people, three members couldn't show up, because they had pre-existing travel outside of the country or whatever, couldn't change it. So they're doing it again, and it seems like it was maybe 20 minutes last time, and now it's an hour, which just seems really strange. So I'll reach out to staff and the consultants tomorrow.
And we don't have to solve this tonight. I'm wondering if we can call, if we can make a motion to close the meeting.
Does anyone else have comments?
Any more chair member comments? Staff?
Just a couple of quick updates from the last council meeting. They took action on the training facility, they approved that, and they also approved the Macy's project. Macy's will still need to come back for their final approvals, they put a number of conditions, revising the plans, sidewalks, green space, those types of things, but it was approved.
Very good, and hopefully we see it happen.
Motion closed.
All of those in favor, say aye. Meeting's been adjourned. Thank you, everyone, see you next time.